Okay, so it is. You should have gotten the message, it's recording. It is ten oh five. I am calling this meeting to order. All right, so that is item one. I'm gonna take role. Brian Allen.
I'm here.
Karen Waters.
Present.
AJ Waters.
Present.
Alfredo Castillo.
Present.
Oscar Jimenez, and I am present. That makes five. Is quorum. Okay. All right, so first item on the agenda is. Public comment on non-agenda items. So anyone in the public who's got. Anything we, that's not on the agenda, please raise your hand. We have four members of the community present. Okay, I see none. No hands raised. So we will move on to item three of the agenda, discussion motion to review video from eight four twenty twenty two. GHNC board meeting, consider. Removal of Thomas Hartfield as Plumb Chair, which no compliance situation, and she could have civility, could have conduct, and the wealth and.
Excuse me a second. I think it's reasonable to respond and recognize that Thomas is not here.
Yes.
Thank you, Brian. That's a good point. He has been sent the invite. We've. I've made various attempts at reaching out to him via email and voice message, and no response. Thank you for clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, let me see if I can. Share my screen. And then, well, actually, let me open the Zoom first. I do apologize for my voice, but. Again, it has to do with this COVID thing.
You don't have COVID again, do you?
I've never, you know what, Brian? I've never had it.
Oh, good.
The last time I thought I had it, or the doctors thought I had it, it wasn't the case, but yet they, I, this was last year when.
Yeah.
When less was known, and I was isolated for ten days, and I was, oh, just killing myself. But this is the first. I've awarded it this long, but I think I did have it in February of twenty twenty, because I had horrible symptoms back then, just before they announced it and did the closure. Okay, so let me see here. I think I've got the recording. Okay, so. There with me, everyone. Where is? Good God, I was able to do this earlier. I'm so sorry, everyone.
Sorry, my girlfriend wants attention.
Oh, how cute.
Our girlfriend, she looks different when we get older, don't we?
Oh, she's, she's only ten months old.
Sorry, everyone, I'm having difficulties getting to this thing. Oh, here we go. Here we go, here we go. I think I've got, okay, can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so let's see here. Okay, so. Okay, so here's the recording. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. And we do have sound. That was the issue before. Now, I don't, I can move forward.
So to the windows. Oscar, when you get to America and Myrna, you know you're getting to the, you're getting to that.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying not to jump too far ahead. Let's see here.
I think it's like a two.
There it is.
Isn't it?
There you go. That's number one.
Okay. But that one was pretty, uh. You know. That wasn't so bad, I thought, but we should review it.
Well, there was a statement made there about. The board.
Okay, so this is still the beginning.
Yeah, you got me on camera. Damn.
Sorry, I'm slowly scrolling as best as I can.
I was trying to see if he could request, if I could request control on here, but I forget this isn't Teams.
Sorry, man. I, I don't have access to that either. I'm, I'm the last man on the totem pole here, you know?
My hands.
If I remember right, he was not on camera, only the, that office.
Wasn't.
Not it, no, it was only.
There, there may be sound associated with that office scene.
Good or two hours. I know he's in two hours.
Forward, and he stays on the same thing. What is?
But it's two hours, because I just did the minutes. I remember it was two hours, a two oh one. This is a long meeting.
No, the meeting was an hour and a half, wasn't it? Because we completed before eight o'clock. But anyway, that's.
Hmm. This is Merka.
Okay, so we're getting there, then.
No, and Merka was here, and she was long. I remember that. Well, maybe it's.
Okay, can we, can we pay attention? This is working, I think. I'm not gonna try forward.
Because there was a quote, because there was a comment at that point after, when she went to the comment phase. So this is a good spot to be, Oscar.
Okay, let's go.
Oscar, do you have the audio connected?
Why can't you, you can't hear it?
No.
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 So then you need, I think it's, you need to go to the bottom where it says, I think it says audio options. On your Zoom.
It's, it's not muted. Hold on, let me. Okay, I just paused it, but you can't hear it?
But it's not playing. It's not playing.
So you have to, so you have to adjust it on Zoom.
But right now, you're gonna shut it off.
Here, I'm gonna make you co-host.
Guys, at the bottom right there, they have to hit play. It's not playing right now.
No, because I paused it, because you, I mean. You were saying you couldn't hear it. AJ, I just gave you co-host. You should be able to. I wonder.
Hold on.
Control it.
Yeah, hold, hold on, it's saying. Oh, this one is different. I should have been able to see audio options at the bottom. So I usually find it under shared screen.
Under mute, when you click mute, audio settings is on the bottom. So you click mute mic, and then on the bottom is audio settings.
Okay, I see it now. So then, on. And it's been a while since I did this. So I think it's under, oh, share screen. Here it is. So it should say automatically shared screen, automatically share.
I, I don't think you can take control of his screen.
Oh, you know what, Brian, you're right. So I wonder if I can.
You'd have to play it for yourself.
But Oscar, if you go down to where it shows your mic, under, under mute, just go to where it says audio settings. You can, it's, it's on the video you're sharing. It's not gonna, not gonna make.
On your lower left corner, Oscar, where it says the mute button, click the arrow, and it says audio settings there.
I don't, I don't see that.
Oh, on your Zoom.
On your screen.
Be on your screen.
Mute. Like, if you were gonna mute yourself right now.
Right.
There's an arrow next to your microphone that, it should be an up, you know, an arrow, and you click on that, and it shows audio setting.
I, I do, and all it shows me is pause.
No, I, I'm not on the.
No, for not, not on the Zoom.
You'd have to go to your own screen.
For like where you, where you set your mute in your video, on the, on the, where that mic is. You click the arrow next to it, and it says, audio settings. It has some options there, but audio settings is one of them.
I am just completely, completely into the song.
Oscar, do you have the Zoom setting, the Zoom icons at the bottom of your screen?
Yes.
She's talking about the mute option, the up arrow, and if you click on the up arrow, you'll have the option at the bottom of that. That pop-up for audio settings. I'm not sure that this has anything to do with that, but, but that's what she's talking about.
And it.
Oh, not there. When you, on your screen, when you mute yourself, that's the one I'm talking about. Where you have the option to turn, where you see where you have the option to turn your video off. You know what you want to turn your video off? The button to the left of that is the mute button. Your mute button.
Mute my audio, stop video.
Because you know what, like, if you don't want to be on camera, what do you do? You turn that off, right? So the button next to that is the mute button. So there's an arrow next to the mic that shows, you click on that, and it shows the options. And audio is one of them.
Oh, good God, we're gonna be here for a long time. Um, let me, let me see if I can send this recording to Karen. Can I send it to you, and then I'll give you host?
Okay.
Sorry about this. I'm not sure. You can do this. Down. Share. Please forgive me, everyone, for this.
All right, you're sick.
Let me see if I can find the one that, that you sent me, because I've, I've watched.
You know, Karen. Karen Waters at one.
There's a setting, there is a setting, we're sharing a video on the actual Zoom itself, and you have to set it out, so when you share, you also share sound, not just sharing.
So here, I have the email. Who can view? Okay, I don't want that, but share with specific people. So Karen, what's your email? K Waters?
K, Karen F, like Frank, C like Charlie, Waters.
Yeah. Waters.
At outlook.com.
Okay. This is crazy. I thought for sure, okay, Karen, you should be getting it.
Okay, I actually found the original one you sent me, so let's see.
Okay, so let me give you. Host. I'm gonna make you a co-host. So that way you can share your screen. Yeah, we're at nine, we're at nine, nine minutes, just so that we kind of have a timestamp. I'm gonna stop sharing mine.
All right. Let's see if I can. Oh, here it is, share sound, okay. And why is it not? Oh. Wait a minute. This one. Oh, here we go. All right, can everyone see?
I could see. It's just.
Okay, just wanna make sure that everyone can see it.
Yep.
Okay, let's see what happens. All right, let's try.
And thank you for, um, willing to join our, this Saturday, our No Wood Property.
Just the last.
In the board was particularly when there is a declination, decla. It's true or not, but I'm happy to definitely connect with my boss, and if someone here knows who received a declination, I'm happy to further elaborate on it.
Okay, thank you very much. And questions for America, starting with Thomas Hartfield?
Yeah, hi, I'm Myrna. Thank you so much for taking the time to, to be here tonight. Really appreciate that. I'm definitely looking forward to you and Councilmember Lee. As I take my board member hat off and put my kind of personal resident hat on, on, thank you for, um, willing to join our, this Saturday, our No Wood Property Association. You know, No Wood Property Association meeting together. Looking forward to meeting you and a council member. Thank you so much. It's unfortunately, you know, the Granada Hills, North, Northridge, Neighborhood Council, you know, could not participate, but nonetheless, thank you so much, you and Councilmember Lee. Looking forward to that. Yeah, looking forward to, you know, having you guys attend, meeting you, meeting all the constituents, really looking forward to that. So thank you so much. Looking forward to that this Saturday, you know, really looking forward to that. But nonetheless, thanks for taking the time out to attend tonight's meeting, and again, I hope to meet you this Saturday. So thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, the council members are excited for that.
Yeah, we, we are as well. Thank you so much. Really good work. We have a great turnout. In and out, it's gonna be that. We are so excited. So thank you so much.
Wonderful. I'm glad that worked out for you, Thomas. That's great. Okay, Sid Gold.
Okay, just a couple of.
So, okay, so just a comment for a moment.
Pause it, pause it for a moment. The, it was very difficult to listen to that, only because there was, there was a redundancy that I don't understand why there was such redundancy. What, does, is there any reason to think that that was of any interest or any concern?
Um, yes, and I will, I, we, this was from. Thomas's wife is the. Uh, president of their association. Their entertainment committee was interested in Granada Hills North Neighborhood Council hosting. However, the timeframe involved potential conflicts of interest, and as we all know, with all the problems we have had with the city clerk lately, it needed to be vetted. The proposed time that they. Well, the, the time they proposed for us to attend this block party was on a day where it would be somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and ten degrees. On a Saturday afternoon in August, and I said, what I suggested is that the entertainment committee from their association meet with our outreach committee. To collaborate and discuss options at a time that would be safe and wise for the health of our board members, if we were considered. The other issue.
But Karen, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the, the reason that I asked the question was. Not because of any information that was presented, because he presented no information.
Right.
Whether or not, I mean, we can discuss at, uh, the issue of, was it presented to us in a timely fashion? Did we have time to do anything about it, et cetera? But, but my concern for the, that audio is simply, there was a. Absolute redundancy of communication. The words were used over and over and over again. And I'm wondering, is there any reason to be concerned about that? There's, you know, there's no way for any of us to know why.
Also, it was a personal matter. It didn't have anything to do with us. It was a personal matter between. Between Thomas and his family association and the community association and the council members' office, so it didn't have anything to do with.
Exactly, and, and all it did is waste some time, but yes, okay.
Yeah, okay, so should we continue? Does anyone have any?
We have, we have, Alfredo, is that you raising your hand? Well, Ellen, you have.
No, I'm raising it.
Go ahead, you've got the floor.
No, I just have to echo real quick that the reason for my concern of this was that. I mean, a matter was being brought up where, you know, it's more appropriate, the, this to be discussed at committee, and if it's. Something that, you know, Thomas had an issue with as far as, you know, the board not committing to it. I mean, that's a, that's a conversation that you have at committee. But to bring, like, I get it that that wasn't the public comment phase, but. I mean, he's still, he is still representing himself as a board member. I mean, any person, like, any personal matters or something that did not happen in committee, it's publicly common spaces. In my opinion, is not the appropriate space to bring that up. So that's just my, that, that's just my stance on this.
Thank you, AJ.
Okay.
Alfredo, did you have?
Oh, sorry.
Alfredo, wait, hold on. Alfredo, go ahead.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Um, my, my thought process was that I, I, I saw this as, like, like Brian said, he was redundant in his, in him being thankful and appreciative of. This person showing up to their meeting and the fact that we didn't show up, and I don't necessarily think that that was like an accusation, but he seemed a little bit more. Um, in his apology, in his repetitiveness, he almost seemed. Um, but it was the word I'm thinking of, um, like distracted. He almost seemed like he wasn't at that moment, like he was being distracted or called someplace else. That's all that I really think I saw from there. I didn't see, and I don't see any wrongdoing with that. Because I don't know the backgrounds of the dealings of it, so all I know, all I'm seeing here is, I don't know, I can't judge here, because this is just, it's just like, uh. When I get distracted in the same family watching and now having a meeting, I may get distracted or something like that. It just seemed that he was very thankful, and. Yeah, he did say that we didn't show up, but he also said the same thing about Northridge, uh, um, council, the Northridge council didn't show up either. So I, I really don't see anything of a major issue in here, but, but let's hear the whole thing, because there's more, right?
Yes, we're getting to the next one.
And if I, if I may, Karen, before you move forward, my, what you mentioned right now, Alfredo, as far as Northridge, I believe, maybe perhaps that was. And I'm going to say, perhaps he intended to say north neighborhood council, not Northridge.
I, I see that's what I'm saying, without knowing.
Correct, correct, correct. No good point. Okay.
Uh, before you go on, before you go on. It should be noted that members of the council are never not members when they're in a board meeting. And you cannot speak as a, as an individual, as a non-board member. Plus, if that was public comment. Uh, the only thing that in public comment, a board member can do to communicate with a, with an individual is to clarify a situation. And in this situation, he was not clarifying. He was making comments to justify and or. Provide a bit of information to the council member that was. Sort of out of line. That should have been in, in, uh, board member comment rather than in public comment, and that's the only thing I see on that. So. Uh, I don't see a lot of action, I don't see any actionable issue here other than to respond to any one of us when we speak in public comment. Out, out of the norm for our authority.
Right, right. It's just be like a point of order type of thing. Hey, you should talk about this during this period of time, because.
Right.
That's what it almost seems like. There's nothing major.
Okay.
Here, but let's listen to the next.
Okay, all right, so.
Move on to the next.
On to the next one.
Done them.
Okay, so let me see.
Councilman's position is.
See, fund the Chamber of Commerce. You would have to fund the community, the Granada Hills Community Foundation, and unless you get it for a.
Hey, Ms. Joni.
Let everybody know, we have been in the process of final, of the council file, so it's, it's, it's.
Call me Joni. Okay. Okay, Joni. Thank you, Joni. Then thank you for all you're doing, and I'd love to get involved. Okay.
My ability to even go outdoors for the next few days to the executive committee agenda.
If she does want to get involved, I recommend highly that we send her. There is no real CAG information. There has been no meetings and very little input. We haven't had any responses from Sheila Kewell's office. No further, I have a retreat on August twentieth. Anyone would be a good learning exercise for any, if you do want to go to the.
Um, obviously the.
Any questions?
Thank you, Brian. Is, is that, that still a Zoom meeting, or is that in person?
That is still a Zoom meeting, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Brian. Uh, planning and land use management, Thomas Hartfield.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, we've got a, a couple of things going on. Um, obviously, the, I think the first and foremost is, I think we've all have witnessed that there's been a number of. You know, just local vendors taking advantage of local streets and, you know, taking advantage of those. Thoroughfares to sell their wares, whether it's, you know, tacos, tamales, or, you know, whatever, whatever it may be, that they're looking to kind of, um, you know, make monies from. I, I think, well, that is one thing that's gonna be in the planning and land use to kind of, you know, you know, you know, kind of bring that back in to say, well, is it fair to the existing businesses? Who have applied for permit, who have a proper restroom and things of that nature. So we're kind of looking at that. So that's the first thing. Um, the second thing is, um, we're looking at the, the current planning and land use. Um, proposed development of Rinoli and Shoshone, which is the proposed senior living development. And of course, they, they've met three times already, twice with the planning and land use, once with a full board. And, and they're gonna come back. It's been about twelve months or so. They're gonna come back, take our, our ideas, the, the constituents, you know, thoughts, processes, their ideas. They're gonna re-present, they've kind of re-looked at those for a fourth time. So we're gonna have that on the, what is it? The, um, it looks like the, the eighteenth. So please, everyone, mark your calendar. Um, what is it? August eighteenth, six thirty via, you know, of course, Zoom, six thirty PM. Please look at that. They're gonna re-present, they've looked at all of the ideas, concepts, suggestions. You know, things they don't like to kind of revamp those, re-present to the Plum Committee. Again, we're gonna, you know, revamp this, you know, redo the, you know, the. That the flyers of the committee, which they've already seen, but we're gonna do it again, just, you know, for argument's sakes, and re-present anything new. Um, you know, just kind of, you know, take a real look at it, but, you know, and again, that, that plot will be developed. It's inevitable. It'll be a gas station, it'll be a condo, it'll be, it'll be something. We don't know what it's gonna be, but eventually it will be developed to something. But we just need to take a fresh look at it, say, have they look at egress, egress, and, you know, is this the right development for our community? We're, you know, we're a bedroom community, resident community, you know, what, do we want another target? Do we want a gas station? Or do we want a senior living, which obviously, there's no debate. So we'll look at that. Yes, Karen, we have, you have comments.
Yeah, a little point of clarification here. I emailed a timeline of events for that particular project, because we have some, we have to have a motion item, which we'll have on our, on the Plum Agenda, and then we'll move through the timeline of events. And then also, there was the gas company that presented to us, which actually, that's a little bit, that's going to come in September twelfth, is it? Is that what they said?
Yeah, yeah, the gas, I mean, that's gonna happen no matter what, no matter, if, if, even if we say stop, they're gonna still proceed forward. It's a necessity. They have to do it. It's a necessity. They have to do it. It's a potential gas leak. I mean, they have to move forward. Even if we say no, they're still going to move forward. It has to be done. So the gas leak, it has to be done. It's a precautionary, it's going to be done. I, I, I appreciate that, Karen. Thank you so much. But yes, you're right on Renali and I think it's above Noelwood. Um, what is that? Woodley, I believe. But that's, that's pushed back until, um, the fall of this season, more towards like October, November. So I didn't mention it then, but, or right now, but you're correct. That eventually be taken care of, but it's a n- necessity. It has to be taken care of. And it, it is going to be done. There's nothing we can do about it. But, but yeah, we can put signs up to alert the public, look the residents of, you know, how do you kind of avoid that intersection? You, you're correct. But going back to more, um, pressing issue is this particular development. It's been at least twelve months in the making, a little bit more to be honest. But that development, i- i- eventually it's going to be developed, it's inevitable. You know, uh, uh, you know, look at those developers, say, you know what? Have you provided to the community?
Because we haven't voted, in order for the board to consider a matter, we can't discuss it now. So we will wait because the board will take an action at a later date based on what comes from Plum. So, um, so we, so thank you for that. And then on the gas company, going back to that again, um, everyone is, we did make some suggestions for signage, which was Brian's point and Wade's point about um, making it clear to those local residents who are going to be compromised for, um, for the duration of the project, to have some clear signage of what will happen. We all know everyone doesn't read the mail, so we just want to make sure that there's adequate signage in the neighborhoods to make the, the stakeholders aware of the alternate routes during that project. And also made a point to let them know, um, the gas company to, uh, make sure the stakeholders have adequate notice. Many of them have services that come to their homes, so we did want to make sure that, um, they have the appropriate notice, so, um. And, uh, I think that is it, um, right? Denise, Thomas, anything else?
Yeah, Karen, I appreciate that. Yeah, it sounds like the gas company is not going to start their project until maybe January, February of Nicheur twenty twenty-three, but I, I believe, um, you know, proactive, it is, is putting the signs up ahead of time, letting people know of Balboa is a, is a thoroughfare, absolutely. But the, um, the confluence for the senior living on Renali and Shoshone, it's been, it's been over twelve months. So, yeah, they're looking forward to kind of move forward on this project. I think that's more pressing because if we look at the gas company, I mean, that's a necessity. That, that's going to happen no matter what. I mean, no matter what we do.
Okay, so Thomas, okay, so we're gonna.
Look at, do we come back for a fourth or fifth time for the, the plum?
Not agendized and it should not be discussed.
Alright, yeah, we're going to move on. Okay, let's move on.
Yeah, sounds good. I'm just trying.
Just a quick update, Tom. We don't need details because those.
Continue this, not a problem, but it's on the agenda and I just want to make people aware of that.
Okay, alright. Okay, we are going to move on to Robert Moore. Robert? Okay.
That was pretty much, I think, the gist of it, right? I don't know that there was. After that?
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, so. Or questions? Um, for me, the, and, and I think, um, it was brought up there that, you know, point of order. Typically, when you ask for an update, it's just an update, right? This is what's being discussed, but nothing should be discussed in detail, especially to, to what was said, that it wasn't unintended. Um, and some of the comments that were made by Mr. Hartfield um, could almost be construed as, you know, having taken a position on this item. Um, that's where I think we, we may have a concern. That's my, that's my point. Um, Brian, you have your hand down?
Yes, I, I agree with you. The the communication is difficult, the, for whatever reason, I don't know why he has never acted that way before. However, the, the concern I have is that there's a lack of understanding of what the purpose of a, an update is. And you're absolutely right. There should not have been any discussion. There should not have been any campaigning or uh, suggestion of, uh, of what should be done or can be done or may be done. Uh, it should have simply been an update as to what had been this, what had been done in terms of, we had a meeting with them, we didn't get to an answer, uh, there are issues that we need, still need to hash out, uh, et cetera, but that wasn't the way it was presented. And I, I have a problem with the presentation. I also have a problem with information being inaccurate. Uh, the Woodley, uh, gas company process is scheduled to start the project on September twelfth. So it's not delayed for two, three months. It's not going to start in January. I ha- we got two notices at our house because we're right here at it. So we're within that five hundred or thousand feet. And I'm, I'm telling you, it's September twelfth is the date that it's supposed to begin. So, uh, while I think there is a difficulty with the communication and the presentation, uh, it's a, i- it's a training issue uh, that, that I can fall on. I cannot accuse anyone of a, a um, egregious action unless I really believe that it is egregious. And while I don't appreciate what was going on, I think that it should be discussed with him as to what the purpose of the update is and what is allowed to be discussed or presented, uh, unless it's an agenda item. Uh, that's just my take.
Okay, so I'll loop in. I agree with, I agree with both of you, but I disagree on the training part, Brian, and here's why. Um, between Oscar and I, I have lost track of how many times we have specifically regarding the Brown Act, regarding serial meetings, regarding posting requirements, regarding procedures. We have been over this, you know, there's emails that you might not have seen and trying to get things posted, trying to make sure there's clear communication with his co-chair. There's just a variety of things. I'm not going to hash them out here, but it starts with accuracy of information. First of all, knowing how your own committee works, we wrote, uh, we had approved a Plum best practices in February. He's never obviously studied the best practices because that has led to misleading the applicants and their expectations as a result of being misinformed by him. Skipping down to the gas company, to your point, which I, which you hear on video, the gas company outlined the projects and he was completely off with that. Um, the, the whole incident was disruptive, it was unprofessional. He has not communicated or not responded to any communication from Oscar, from me at any ti- at any time during, since this incident occurred. And there seems to be an unwillingness overall to accept the training. He's been referred to the best resources we have in our district. I think we both agree on Plum, which is, um, Hannah Lee and Maria Fisk as to help guide, um, in his ability to, um, handle Plum better. But all of this, and none of us know what happened, only he knows what occurred before he logged onto the meeting. But at this point, being serious as Plum is, the black crowd, cloud over our city with regard to planning and land use management matters. We, 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 it, it has to be someone who is cognizant of this, of this, the importance of Plum and to not mislead applicants and, and to have emotional intelligence to know how to conduct oneself when you log on to a meeting. And even though it only happened one time, um, it happened. And it, I, I'm, I'm just done with it, frankly. So that's my opinion on it. And I would say Alfredo has.
Okay, Karen, um. Before I hand over the, the floor to Alfredo and JJ, you've got, um, your hands up. Um, regarding the Southern California gas, now, one thing there, there could have been confusion because initially the Southern California gas came with a project, right? That they did want to start in September. And I can't remember the specific specifics for that. And, um, subsequent to that, they came back with another project. Second project, which is the one that we're talking about on Woodley and Balboa. Okay?
They were installing a valve, right? Or no?
The first project was the one that was pushed out to that one potentially the end of the year or the beginning of twenty twenty-three. Now, the concern I have here is that the project that is moving forward in September um, somehow was not even noted, or he didn't have wind of it. I don't know what happened. Uh, but anyway, so that's, you know, when you have a project of that magnitude, um, and it's here, right? Already coming up, um, it certainly should have been addressed. But, um, so maybe he was, in his answer, he was confusing it with the first project that, again, is being delayed till the end or the beginning of next year. Alfredo, you've got your hand up, so I'll give you the floor.
Yes, the question that I, that I mean, that I, that I see here, I mean, uh, I, I, I see what everyone is, is talking about, that things need to be brought to committee. And in, in bringing them to committee and talking about them not coming to committee and him talking about projects that the gas company is trying to bring up and they're going to do. It's really irrelevant whether we fight it or not. And I've seen Sid and everyone fight. Hey, that's going to mess up traffic here and we're going to do this and this is going to do that. But the most things that they, they do to say, okay, we'll show up to your committee, we'll announce it to other people. There isn't really much we can do. I, I don't, didn't see, um, Hartfield doing anything right here that was really like he had control of it or any kind of.
You muted yourself, thanks.
We're still going to discuss that vote on it, and necessarily, he has no personal gain in in doing those kinds of things. And that's, that's the only thing I'm saying is that I don't see any personal gains if there are any from what he actually did, or any behavior or any approval, all those kinds of things. I mean, the reality is him stating that anything in this project in the area regarding the, uh, Renali and Shoshone project, that something is going to get planted there, we don't know what it's going to be. I mean, honestly, every single piece of land around us is getting developed into something. So for him to say that, state that, isn't necessarily approving this specific project that is being presented to us today. He simply stated, hey, something's going to get approved. That's what I understood. I may need to listen to the video again and now listen to it. I listened to it. This is the second time I listened to it because remember I was doing the minutes? So I had to listen to it twice. Um, so i- if we listen to it again, I don't see a personal gain or a personal approval or an endorsement of it. Something is going to get done in that, in that land because it's not developed and everything's getting developed in there. But I don't see, uh, uh, like, uh, Brian used the words, any actionable uh, or repercussions that we actually see here. And, and yes, I understand that he is the community leader and he's supposed to act a certain way. But this gentleman, just like me, uh, is a volunteer of our community, lives in our community. If he needs more training, we don't expect him to be perfect in my handling. I wish I was as eloquent as Sid and as Brian and as Karen and as Oscar. I wish I was as eloquent as you guys were in the, in dictating how and like bring you guys information. But I actually, hey, maybe he needs to be a little more training, but am I supposed to be the one to do it? I don't know. I don't see an actionable activity here where we need to do something. But I'm glad we're reviewing it though because this is something that we need to handle. We feel uncomfortable about it. A lot of people must feel uncomfortable about it. They would have need to hear it and keep an eye on it.
Thank you, Alfredo. Um, AJ, you've got the floor, and then I'll go to Brian.
So I'll try to make mine quick because, um, it's about to run on eleven. But I think I just simply take it back to what with the stakeholders thing. I mean, you know, we just have to be, we, I mean, no, no one's perfect, like, you know, I'll agree with that. But like, my personal position was, was what we saw. While maybe it might not be, you know, action, actionable or, you know, warrant like any type of, type of consequence. You know, just zooming, just looking at this from a thirty thousand foot view. It's one of those, it's, it's still a thing of, it can't happen again because we have to, because we have to reflect, we have to put ourselves in, because of what are the stake, what are, what are, what is the community thinking of this? You know, we're supposed to be working on behalf of our community and it's just my position is something like this is not a good look on us, uh, uh, the board. No, it may not be severe, but I'm, but what I'm simply saying is something like this is, is not at least communicated that, you know, that it was not appropriate. And I mean, just to kind of take it back, I mean, we did take an oath as far as our code of conduct, so. That's, I, I mean, that, that's something right there that I'm looking. So, you know, while, yes, we're human and, and we're not perfect. It's, it's just looking at this, you have to put yourself in the place of, if you were, if you were somebody in the community sitting, sitting in a board meeting, what would you have thought of this? I mean, is this, I, I mean, do you, do you see this as like, would, would you see the Plum Committee individually, see that as a committee that you could trust? If you see something like that and you see information that's being flowed to you inaccurately, I can personally tell you as, as a, like, if I was a stakeholder and I was looking at that, I can tell you on a day-to-day, getting, getting misinformation constantly. It's a frustrating thing. It's, it's a frustrating thing from a stakeholder standpoint. So, I, I'm just simp- I, I'm just simply saying, it's just, it's, while we're human, just something we have to be careful about. Like, my, my personal position is it can't happen again.
Thank you, AJ. Um, Brian, you've got the floor.
I just want to address a couple of points that were made. Uh, the, the fact is, he didn't do anything that is my words egregious. However, the feeling that you get when someone does not take show concern for an active, for a project, is that he's not working for the community. Uh, he's taking a shortcut here because in his opinion that it was not, you know, that nothing's gonna, no- nothing's going to be controlled by us. It's going to happen, something's going to happen whether we like it or not. But that's not the issue. The issue is, aren't, we're supposed to be working on behalf of the stakeholder. So whatever we can get accomplished to ensure that the stakeholders are, uh, understanding that, uh, we have provided them the most warning, the most knowledge. We have asked for concessions if concessions are in order. Uh, and we have done our job to review the project effectively. Uh, we need to present that to the, to the stakeholders. They need to feel that that's happening. Uh, with regards to all the other information that is not being presented here today that, uh, Karen had rattled off earlier. If that information is available to discuss, we should, we should do that. If, because what we're talking about here is the possibility of removing him as chair. There's all the statements that have been made that, you know, we're volunteers, we're not professionals, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all correct, but that's what government is. There are no professionals in government unless you're a lawyer and I don't consider that a professional when it comes to government issues. But the, the fact is, we have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure that we act in the best interest of our stakeholders. And when we don't address issues with, with a sense of concern, then then we are not acting in the, in the best interest of our stakeholders. So I, I have to ask a question if, because I can't remember for specifically, are chairs appointed by the president or are they approved by the board?
Chairs are approved by the board.
Okay, so my, my recommendation is that we come up with an agreement here to take this to the board and present the action if there is an action to present. All right, and, and move forward on this because if there isn't, if there isn't feeling among the five of us that, that there should be a change in leadership of the Plum Committee, we need to present that case with all the facts. So that's, that's what I would recommend that we do now. So in order to get to that stage, let me make the motion to remove Thomas as Plum Chair.
Second.
So the motion is to remove Thomas Hartfield from the Plum Committee.
Let me, let, let me correct the words, to recommend removal. Okay, so.
Okay, so the motion is discussion motion to recommend that Thomas Hartfield be re, as Chair of Plum Committee.
Right.
Okay. And that motion has been seconded by Karen Waters.
Yes.
Okay.
And I don't see any other discussion.
Any discussion from the attendees? We have five. Thank you so much for joining our, our meeting, by the way. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. Okay, so we are done with discussion then, so let's take a vote. And again, the motion is discussion and motion to recommend that Thomas Hartfield be removed from Chair of the Plum Committee. Okay, so let's go around and take a vote. Brian Allen.
Uh, yes.
Karen Waters.
Yes.
Sorry, Oscar, did you call me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes.
Alfredo Castillo.
Abstain.
Abstention. Oscar Jimenez, I will say yes. That is four, yes is one abstention. Okay. That's that. All right, so then from here, then the next action would be to present it to the board. Cannot be presented at this next board meeting, which is tomorrow because it needs to be advertised 72 hours before. So we will take a different approach to that and it could be a special meeting of the board.
If you could have a special meeting, actually, we would have to play the video at the special meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so then we couldn't do it before the board meeting because there isn't enough time for that. So we should schedule it, you know, within the week for sure so that we can wrap this up.
Yeah, so thanks and move forward. But I would highly recommend that if we're going to have a special meeting on this issue, that we do not confine it to strictly that board meeting, but to end, to any and all issues of concern. Because, you know, wouldn't be fair to to take an action on this. I've said this is not an actionable issue that we're discussing today. But it sounds like there are actionable issues or reasons to take action and I would want to make sure that we're fair in every respect.
Of course. And we, and to your point, Brian, when we began the meeting today, Thomas has not responded.
Yeah, no, I understand, but that's, you know, he, he, he doesn't have to. This is not a requirement to be at this meeting.
True, but when someone's discussing you, I mean, if, I mean, if it's me and someone's discussing me and I'm on the agenda, I'm going to be there.
I'm going to be there. I agree.
Okay.
Just the records just have to show that he was notified about this. So, you know, it's well documented.
Okay, very well. So that is the.
We, we need to keep in mind, we're not removing, we're not suggesting that we're removing from the board or from the committee, just as Chair.
Chair, correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
So let's see with that, I think Karen, if you want to stop sharing.
I think I did, didn't I?
Yeah, it's not there anymore.
I, I think, I, I don't know if it's a situation that maybe we should consider is, I don't think we should have a special meeting for this, for the general. I think we should need to hold it at the general meeting in October. About to stop, but I don't think we should have a gen, uh, when we have a special meeting, less people show up. And I think in this situation, the more people show up, the better.
Alfredo, it's very hard to hear you.
I kind of heard him. I think he said it's, it's, it, we should wait till October. The only reason why we.
The October, uh, general meeting instead of the.
So why, why wait?
Because we have pressing items going on right now that the, and, and you might not, you won't know this, Alfredo, because you weren't at the last meeting we had, but it turns out that the representative for that development that he was speaking about quite extensively is a lobbyist. And he's a well-known lobbyist. He's been a part for 15 years in city council, neighborhood councils and the planning and land use, I'm sorry, alien zoning planning. So we do need to make sure that attic, accurate communication is absolutely mandatory. And that's why it's a serious matter because this is, they're, they're, they've been very much pushing the issue. And since we can't trust the information to be accurate that they have been given, we need to make sure that we are acting to make sure, and there's another project coming up apparently. So it's a matter of.
It turns out, sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, I'm done.
Alfredo, it turns out that the presentation that we got, while it was extensive and while it was good-looking and while they were very forthcoming in terms of communication, the facts that they are presenting are not all believable. And as an example, they made a comment about traffic. And they made, they made the comment based on assumptions of what they've seen in the past. But they haven't done anything in Los Angeles. They know nothing about Los Angeles traffic. And so they were making assumptions on data that had nothing to do with this area. So I think it's imperative that we are careful enough to make sure that when they present a package, that they don't make false assumptions and mislead both the public and us. So I wouldn't want that particular area to be a further problem than it is already. And, and it, the area is, is everybody, as all of us know, because we live here, this is a difficult area and it needs to be reviewed properly. So that's, that's why I think it, it's imperative that we move forward.
Is this item, these items that he is bringing about to our board, are these items being removed from the agenda for Tuesday's, for tomorrow's meeting?
They, they haven't been moved forward. If you're talking about, sorry, Brian, if you're talking about the item for the development, Alfredo, that item has not been moved forward from committee. So it's, it has to go through committee first before it can be brought to the board for review and or.
Okay, so those items will come up in the October meeting.
Right, so it's pending, what's happening now, Alfredo, is the, the, the applicants presented pictures of their, you know, the renderings. But we don't yet have the information packet with the applications, the transformation, I'm sorry, transportation findings, the E I, E I R, there's, there's a whole list of information that they have yet to provide hopefully by the November Plum meeting, they will have that all ready for the Plum Committee to review and to, you know, to see if it's ready to present before we have a town hall with the community. All that has to be, you know, reviewed.
And, and who's the co-chair for the Plum?
Denise.
Denise?
Yes, Denise.
All right, well, I, I've just, I'm just curious that I think we should have this motion being better up, that we have a full, a full council and a full board and a full, I don't know, showing all the community. That's my thoughts, but.
But we, we agree with that. The, the reason for calling a special meeting is to get the board together, not, not this committee, but the board together to make this decision. And, you know, that's kind of what the board is all about, is about doing what it needs to do in order to get the job done. And if that means a special meeting, then, you know, that's what we should all sign on to. We, we do need to make sure that, you know, all N C's require and are looking for the committees to provide them all the accurate information to make a decision. And in this situation, we don't feel like we're getting accurate information or a concerted effort to find accurate information. So that's the reason for wanting to move forward on this and make a change as quickly as possible so that we can move forward appropriately. Yeah, if I'm out of line on that, just, that statement.
Just a bit. So basically, it's so that we can bring it to the board, see what the board feels. And so that way, if, if a change is in order, then that can be done as soon as possible. If not, then we need to work with Thomas to figure out what needs to be done so that we can move.
I'm online, I'm on board with that.
Okay, so that is, that's the intention. Hopefully he can reach out, he'll reach out to me beforehand. You know, again, various attempts have been made, via email, via voice messages, and he has not reached out to me. So. Okay, with that, I think then we'll move forward. And again, I'm going to make clear, like, I don't like special meetings. I don't like having to set up extra meetings. It is time consuming. You know, again, here I am cooped up in my room having to do this. You know, and to your point, Karen, earlier, I'd much rather be doing something else, especially on a Monday. Not that I can, because again, I'm cooped up, but.
And a holiday.
And a holiday.
Yeah, and a holiday.
Anyway, I do appreciate all your time, you know, it's such short notice because this is a pressing item. So with that, let's see, I believe the last item is the committee member announcement. Okay, so I'm going to go around the room. Brian?
Uh, no, I have nothing else other than say, saying to stay inside. It's going to be a hun, another 106 degree temperature here in Granada Hills North. So be careful.
Thank you, sir. Oh, and Karen Waters?
Everyone have a good day and be safe.
Thank you. Alfredo?
No comments, sir. Stay safe out there.
Thank you, sir. AJ?
I'm just going to make one big comment that just in the future, you know, if something like this is to arise, that, you know, as a board, you know, we act on it it as promptly as possible. So it just doesn't put us into a situation of having to have a special meeting on a day like holiday. But that being said, hope everyone enjoys their holidays, stays cool and gets out. Gets relief from the heat.
Thank you, AJ. And for me, the only thing I want to is kind of expand on what Brian was saying, saying earlier about the temperature, stay indoors. And also, you know, I encourage everyone to adhere to, I believe, a recommendation by D W P to, you know, as far as other appliances, you know, dryers, washers and all that. I guess they're saying to not use them between the hours of four and nine, because I guess.
And don't charge your electric cars.
Those are, those are.
Even, even though we are moving forward towards them.
So if, so trying to adhere to that to avoid the possibility of, you know, an outage. So. All right, with that, thank you, everyone. Have what's a great rest for what's left for the weekend. And we will see you all again tomorrow for our general board meeting. All right.
Good night, everybody. Have a great day.
Good day. Thanks. Bye-bye.